Okay, it is Tuesday, October thirteenth, 2020. We'll call a meeting to order. Please stand for the legislative allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn.
Had some reports received and filed.
September 2020 collector fee filed.
Okay, Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We've got planning commission meeting tonight. Solid Waste Management District Board tomorrow. Soup and chili competition at Health Department Thursday. I think that's about it for now.
I have this tour in the Marriott on Friday.
Yep, I'm doing that with you. I think we're gonna have Bloody Marys.
Are we?
It's probably taller.
Perfect.
What's Friday?
Courtyard on Marriott tour.
Michelle.
I'm gonna go out there today.
Okay, I got tomorrow, Wednesday, chamber transition, bicentennial. We got our meeting in the morning. I've got CAP Regions outreach meeting at 11:30, which conflicts with the soup, and then Friday courtyard tour and then the Patriots Day meeting, so that's all I've got. Any other comments? We're gonna go right into bids and contracts. Bid award and contract signing for 2020-26 prisoner transportation services.
For 2020-26, we had one bidder bid on it, and it was U.S. Corrections, and our recommendation is to go with them. The Sheriff's Department was okay with their pricing.
I move that we approve and sign the contract with U.S. Corrections LLC.
He's awarded first.
Signing the contract is an award. Signing the contract is an award.
Usually, okay, whatever.
You second it, Jeff?
Yeah, do we need clarification? Is the signing gonna be the awarding, or we're gonna award and sign the contract?
Sometimes. I mean, there's been motions made to get the two award and sign the contract.
I'm fine either way.
The heading says bid award and contract signing, so.
That's fine.
Well, we sign the contract if we have the contract at the same time as bid award, and we've done it differently, so in Lynn's defense, just trying to make sure we're doing it right, so be consistent.
I vote the award and sign the contract.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Approval and signing of contract amendment for Show Me Healthy Women contact from DHSS.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is just a contract amendment for the Show Me Healthy contract that we have with DHSS. They extended the time and increased the amount, so this is that pass-through contract where we help women who don't have insurance get those increased screenings and recommended screenings.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Yep.
I move that we approve and sign the contract amendment for Show Me Healthy Women.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Okay, new business, accounts payable review.
I have to start approval of accounts payable anywhere given.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna kind of jump around a little bit. That's all. CARES, CARES. Second and final reading of budget adjustment number 20.
This is for $19,632.50. This is for an insurance proceeds on the vehicle at the public office. And this is a final reading. I do need actions.
I move that we sign quarter number 20.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signing a credit application for video conference gear.
Just a credit app, Brian?
Yes, sir.
I move that we sign the credit app.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, ESP forklift discussion. Ciara?
Did you get me a replacement page?
Yes.
Okay. Your solid email come through. More papers.
Thank you.
So, long story short, that forklift has been used consistently since COVID, moving PPE, unloading EMS's shipment orders, which is multiple times a week, so it's just worn itself down. We had the technician come out, and Boils was discussing exactly what needed to be done with it, and I had absolutely no idea how much it was gonna be, and our budget just doesn't support that, so I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do. Boils suggested I speak to Kristen, which I did, and she said I need to bring it in front of you guys, so that's where I'm at.
We don't have equipment repairs in Ciara's budget for that amount.
Right.
If you want to transfer from contingency or something.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, contingency under GR, or is that where that would come from, or does she have contingency in her budget?
She does not, so contingency in GR.
I mean, this wouldn't be eligible for any CARES funding.
I don't think so. I don't think you can get there.
Twenty-three hundred.
You know, if this brand is up, we have, I think I had $10,000 in my contingency for the hazmat emergency money, if you want to use that money, because we do, that's part of it. I mean, I get it if you don't want to, but.
So the equipment we're moving out of there is not just for EMS, though?
No, it's not.
So that would be fitting, because it is for fire department, PD, for, I mean, you get some of it, so.
Or even, I mean, or even me and EMS kids, both.
I figured you'd say they could pay for it all, huh?
I tried that.
We're not here, so.
I tried that.
No offense.
If you're gonna do, if you're gonna make the EMS page, you just have to buy a new forklift for a new one, but if you're repairing this one, I can say, I can see.
We're gonna be getting a phone call in a second.
Since it's already fixed.
Just trying to help.
I don't care, whatever's easier, I mean.
Contingency out of GR.
Okay.
That's what I think. We just take care of it. And so, I mean, what caused this to happen? Is it just that much use, or it not been getting regular maintenance, or what's going on with it?
As my understanding is general wear and tear. It just hasn't been up kept.
It wasn't the newest machine as when we bought it.
And we used it quite a bit, I'm just saying, for the tornado. I think we took it to somebody's location to move water, move stuff around. So, I know, we turned in quite a few hours on that for the tornado, and it's the only thing I know.
So is it getting maintenance, then?
It gets maintenance, but I mean, just old stuff.
Yeah, this was a leak, and the brakes were rolling out.
Yeah, old stuff just has repairs and.
Maybe something to keep in mind that eventually, we probably need to replace that.
I don't know. I'm under the opinion that you keep fixing it.
I mean, when's the last time you put your money in it?
Never.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, that's.
But that's why I asked if we ever did any routine maintenance, too, because a lot of times that keeps a lot of the stuff. You're gonna have hoses that break. I understand that, but, so. I don't know. If we find a deal on one, we can talk about it then, but otherwise, if we got it fixed, let's go with it.
Yep.
I move that we approve transferring money out of contingency under GR to pay for the repairs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have anything else before we go to CARES? Okay. Approval of CARES Act application requests.
I have Leanne and Teresa on the phone today. Julie had another meeting, so she is either going to be late or not make it this morning, so I will turn it over to you ladies.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, we're just gonna have a, it shouldn't be too terribly long, but Leanne's gonna go over the funding recommendation.
You jinxed us.
We're gonna talk a little bit about the City of Jefferson and their allocation, and then just give you a report over how the last reporting cycle went, so I'll let Leanne get started with the funding recommendations.
All right. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We do have kind of a long list of items to recommend today, and the reason for that is now that we're in phase three, we are not requiring all of the invoices and purchases to be made upfront, and so many of these will be, will be asking for preliminary approvals, but keep in mind, we won't be asking for any reimbursements until the expenses are actually incurred. So on the, I'll also add that I sent a quick update just before this meeting, so you may not have seen it, but we had one item on page two that has changed, and if you haven't seen it, I'll point that out when we get to it. The first section, section A, those are our municipalities, and we have a rather long list of items from A01. You may remember, these have been on here for a while. Last week, they were in the potentially eligible category because they had not been purchased yet. At this time, we have selected the ones that are deemed to be eligible into the eligible column, so that those could be approved under the CARES guidelines for purchase, for future purchase. I'm not gonna read through each individual one. You can take a look at those. They are all for one single entity. The ones that we did not put forward are ones where we would need additional information to be able to justify the relationship to COVID-19. The ones that are in the eligible column were pretty straightforward in terms of their connection to COVID-19. We do still have three items in the potentially eligible column. And what we'll talk about later is the maximum dollar amount allocated for this municipality. I guess I don't really have to say which one it is, but based on the census population, since we have a million dollars allocated for municipalities, to prorate that for each municipality based on census information, as we had talked about previously, this city would be eligible for around $900,000 of that $1 million amount. And so what we could do is, if the Commissioner wants to approve these items and allow the entity to continue submitting applications, or we could ask them to prioritize the things that are most important to them based on a maximum cap that you would be willing to approve. Does that make sense?
So right now, they were allocated almost $900,000, but they've submitted applications for, I think, 1.2 or 1.4. I'm not sure what the total was.
Yeah, it was originally 1.4. There were a couple of items that we disqualified, and those are at the end, at the end of the document with ineligible items, and we've already funded a couple of items. So it started out around 1.4.
So at this point, do you want to approve the things that they've already reviewed and have the proper documentation for, or do you want the city to prioritize their list to give you the things that are more important to them?
I'd personally like them to prioritize it. I've talked to a couple of the city council people and kind of asked what their priorities were, so we can watch for them in case it came down to us having to pick and choose, but I think it should be up to them. I know a couple of things they've had were some computer software stuff for building regulations and stuff, so that they can do things without actually having to have personal contact, and then the kiosk was one of them, and I see it on the list. A couple other software things that was gonna help them maintain social distance and stuff, so I'm just one.
Well, I think, yeah, we could get the opportunity to say, basically, you know, it's kind of like Christmas catalog. You know, you mark all the stuff you want, and you get just a little bit of it, and you're happy. We can say we've got $900,000 for you. What's on your wish list that you really need to have?
Well, and we can give them the items that are eligible at the moment, so the ones that they've reviewed and said are eligible, we can tell them that information at this point.
And we're gonna approve it Thursday if.
I'm fine with that. I just don't wanna let them prioritize, because I don't know where, this list probably came from everybody, and they threw it all in there, but it may not be a priority for everybody there, so let them pick.
And if you think about it, that's really how we approached it with the schools. We calculated the amounts. We allocated it based on enrollment. We gave them a number, and then they submitted their applications accordingly.
But the schools also had to go out and purchase the stuff ahead of time and then ask for reimbursement.
Correct.
Very different. Very different, so. Anyway, you know, just because we allocated $100 per student, that doesn't mean that they've come anywhere close to spending that, or we haven't approved anywhere close to spending that yet, so it still needs to be COVID-related.
Correct.
I mean.
So you don't have to decide this minute unless you want more discussion, or I could go on through the list?
I'm not deciding on it today. I wanna send it to them.
Yeah, I'm with Jeff, and we let them say, okay, yes, we need all this. We want this, you know, but they basically, this is what you've got, so is this more important than some of the other stuff that's farther down, or, you know, what are their priorities? So.
Leanne, will you reach back out to them and ask them to prioritize them?
Yes, absolutely. We can do that.
Okay.
So is that, is that how we're gonna do this going forward, is we prioritize and said, here's $900,000. Why don't we just write them a check and let them do whatever they want with it? Because I'm not in agreement. I mean, if it's directly related to COVID, okay, but there's a lot of this stuff that I believe that they've said is eligible that I wouldn't fund. I don't think that it relates to COVID.
That's why you get the list from them, because you can go down and you can pick stuff out of there and say no, whether you agree with it or don't agree. I mean, some of the stuff that we've bought, I'm sure they don't agree that maybe it should qualify, but.
And your BKD is looking at these, and in your, in your mind, these qualify, right? The ones that you have.
The ones in the eligible.
Eligible, they qualify.
I mean, you look at it.
The remaining items, they would have to provide us more information for us to make the connection to COVID. But keep in mind, we're not, we're not suggesting that we would send them a subversive agreement today for $900,000.
No.
What we're saying is, let's go back to the drawing board, knowing that you're not gonna get 1.4 million. You're gonna get a maximum of $900,000 if the items qualify.
And then.
If the items qualify and they're approved by the Commission.
Yes.
You ultimately have that final decision. I need this list here.
Yeah, I just think there's a huge distinction between what qualifies and what's a need. What do you really need and what's a want, because otherwise, it's just a gift. And I would say that everything that we purchased to date internally has met the smell test. I mean, we have not approved anything that, that wasn't needed for COVID-related items. Not that I'm aware, not that I can think of anything that we would have approved internally.
No, I disagree with that either.
Yeah, so.
But they might. I mean, it's, I think it's fairly subjective. They got, you know, the temperature control thing for the digital temperature monitoring system for City Hall, you know?
Right.
We can judge whether we think it's fitting or not or needed, but we also aren't down there.
No, but I've been in that building a lot. I know exactly what it looks like.
But some of the schools wanted the thermal imaging thing, too, to be able to tell, and, you know, we weren't crazy about that.
Right.
Effectiveness necessarily, but, you know, kind of fall back to where if the schools feel like that's gonna help them feel good about opening back up to teachers and parents and administration, then, you know, kind of let them run with it, but tell them that's, when the money runs out, that's it. So I see exactly what you're saying. I don't wanna just give them a check today.
Right.
And say, but the money's available.
I'm just saying, there's a lot of things that are on this list that, whether they've said they're eligible or not, that I don't agree that we should fund, but, and that's probably where all land when we vote, but anyway, it's not just, here's $900,000, pick.
No, and this would, they don't get this, well.
Well, they know exactly what they've submitted. They've done all the paperwork.
But I mean, they still gotta.
So, I mean, if it's an eligible expense, I'll probably approve it, but I don't believe that it's directly COVID-related. I'm gonna vote against whether it's eligible or not. I mean, that could be reallocated money at a later date for other things, just like everything else, that we've had extra money that we'd be able to reallocate for other things as well.
Is there something on the list under eligible cost at the moment that you want to tell them that you will not fund?
Well, so they've been virtual for quite some time. I would assume that they're working so 50 laptops. Doesn't really strike me that they need 50 laptops if they've been getting by right now, so.
See, and I think that came up earlier. BKD's gonna say that, okay, it's eligible. Now it's up to us to determine whether we feel like it's.
Reasonable.
Reasonable. So they're gonna tell us it's eligible, and we can say, look, we're fine with 10 or 25 or whatever arbitrary number you wanna pick, or we can say, okay, we'll do the 50, but.
I mean, so modifications of customer service area, $100,000. Most of the area down at City Hall already has protective windows. I mean, 90% of what they do is behind protective glass, so with exception to maybe downstairs at City Hall. Now, if there's other buildings, I don't, I'm not aware of, but that's a pretty big chunk of money. I mean, I realize we put up some temporary measures, but we didn't spend $100,000. And then even the customer service kiosk, I'm not sure what that is, but. If you're gonna do that, you might as well have everything online, so you can do everything online, so that you don't even have to go there. And of course, I don't have the application, so I don't know what all that entails, but I'm just looking at it from a bird's eye view. Those are just a few things that, I mean, those are big-ticket items, but.
Do you want to see particular applications?
Well, it's obvious where these are coming from. The other ones, I like have them blind.
I mean, to me, it just, we've been dealing with this for six-plus months. These are a want. I mean, we've been dealing with it, so if it was a need, they would've been pushing, hey, we need this, we need this, we need this, we need this. I have not heard that.
And Leanne, in those categories that they were talking about, none of that has been purchased yet, right?
Correct, correct. Not that we know of, as, because I think they sent those applications in early September, so if they purchased them between September and October, we didn't know about that, so.
But I suspect if they had purchased them in the meantime, they probably would have submitted receipts by now.
Correct.
As part of phase two.
And I do have one more. I think they turned in one more application in the online system on Friday as well, so, yeah, we have not looked at it yet.
Only one I'm kind of curious about is the modification of customer service area, protective glass, et cetera, so, because as Chris said, we've done that everywhere. We've done that here. We've done it and done it at the Health Department, and it wasn't anywhere near $100,000, so I would kind of like to know what, what they're proposing to do that makes it so expensive.
But every store, every business and every store in all of Cole County has already done that. Every one. I mean, if that was a need, they would've already done it, and they'd have the receipts to turn it in. I mean, every store, every business that feels like they need protective plexiglass or whatever it is, every one has put it in. A little late if we approve it now.
Well, I just, that's why I'd like to just kind of know what.
If it doesn't get put up till December.
What they're, they're talking about there, because.
So you have the ability to deny it. I mean, you can say that you don't want to cover that cost, that if they really needed it, it should've been put in place prior to now.
Well, I mean, right now, we're just having a discussion, and I'm just basically airing my feelings on some of these things, and so.
I can, I can read what they said in the application for that one, if you'd like. The justification was currently the lower level of City Hall has two counter areas and two kiosk areas where staff interact with the public. These areas do not have protective glass, and it's difficult to maintain social distancing as staff service the customers in these areas. By modifying these areas to include protective glass and security updates, we can improve the customer service environment and increase employee protection.
I mean, I get it. I mean, I've been downstairs to, you know, planning protective services, and, but they need a couple of these.
I don't disagree with you. I just don't let them prioritize, and then we can disseminate it then. We can look at, what was it, $100,000 for that, so if that's the only place is downstairs, that might be what we spent on the recorders, or maybe twice that. Not knowing.
Well, I'm just saying, if we approve $100,000, I mean, they're talking about a remodel. And how long is that gonna take? What's the construction industry like now? Backed up about two years?
I just think as much information as we can give them when they prioritize, we'll make the process faster and see if they're going forward. So if there's something that you're thinking that automatically you are not on board with, we probably should tell them that before we send the list back, so that when it comes back, we can move forward quickly. I mean, the laptops you could, and it looks like there's multiple places where there's laptops included on the list. You could say the max number of laptops we're going to cover is 20 or 25, or I mean, if you're not comfortable with 50, give them a number.
Yeah, what, we buy 10?
We bought 10 for us and I think 10 for the courts.
That was total. So the one item is 50 and then there's multiple.
There's 50 there and then there's four for HR and admin and then the video conferencing equipment for the fire department includes laptops and webcams. I don't know how many that includes. But those were the three that I saw that included laptops. Yeah, there's iPads as well.
Why don't we?
I mean, I just tell, I'll tell you guys since you'll be here when I'm gone, the end of December, can't get here soon enough, so anyway, but you buy them now and they stay in our inventory and you're going to want them replaced. And so you don't just put them in surplus and they go away, so. Anyway, I mean, the ones over at the courts, all this stuff, all becomes an asset and it'll have to be replaced in three or four years, so. Same way down at City Hall.
Why don't we have them prioritize what they want and try to approve it Thursday?
Okay, so no restrictions on anything, just send the list back and prioritize them?
I think you all are raising very good questions. You know, on some of these, we don't really have the perspective of the building itself to have a clearer understanding of, you know, the setup or what it looks like. One thing we can do is maybe ask for them to provide bids on the larger items, because that is what we were requiring for the private schools at the time that we were doing, you know, phase one and phase two, where the county was purchasing on behalf of the private schools. They had to have, you know, documentation of bids to get a ballpark estimate on some of those expenses. And although we have documentation for the items provided here, we don't have a lot of detail in terms of bids and that sort of thing.
So Leanne, on some of the equipment and things, did they not provide you with a quote or a bid from someone?
No. I think all of these, they just kind of have a one-page write-up about what it is and what they're wanting it for.
I think that would be a good idea, just in general, just so that we know when they do actually make the purchase, that it is what they said they were going to purchase and that it.
So, so this brings up another point I thought about the other day, so obviously, if we're approving them to purchase it and it exceeds that limit, do they have to go out and bid it? Or do they have to get a cooperative purchasing agreement? Or can they call it emergency purchase and go out and purchase the item?
So there are different thresholds under the CARES Act, and I don't remember off the top of my head exactly what the dollar limits are, but for certain dollar limits, there are different procurement requirements. And I think the threshold is actually high enough that probably anything that comes through here could be justified with an emergency purchase. But certainly, they are encouraged to, you know, make prudent purchases, use competitive bidding to the extent that they can.
Yes, so they moved that threshold for emergency purchasing during COVID for COVID items. But we would hope that, like their laptops and items like that, that they have a cooperative, that they're already purchasing those types of items off of.
And we do request their procurement policy, just like we did with Cole County and like we've done with other applicants, so that we can make sure that they are following their own procurement policy.
So you could ask them to prioritize and then any of these bigger purchases, more detail and/or bids.
Okay, yeah.
So if we do that, we're not going to be approving it on Thursday then.
Depends how fast they respond, I guess.
Yeah, I would expect it would be next week, by the time we could get responses back and compile everything that we need.
Yeah, I would still do it, so.
What?
Just trying to get a consensus.
Well, it doesn't have to be approved today.
No, that's what I'm saying, no.
No, just a consensus of moving forward.
If it's next week, it's next week.
I would really like them to prioritize.
Okay, so send the list back to them, have them put it priority order, submit bids if possible for the larger items.
Do you want to set a dollar threshold for bids? Maybe everything over 10,000? Just throwing a number out there.
There's just quite a few things on this list that I just don't think are, I mean, I named a few, but. Anyway. I just think that they need to re-go through it and see what their actual need is.
And we can be specific that, hey, we really are trying to fund things that are at need, not as much a want, so please prioritize accordingly or something along those lines. And also, you have, you will remember from earlier, I'm sure we've talked about, but these cannot have been in their budget previously, so I do have to sign a certification that these were not included in their budget.
I mean, I know we put up a nice window at Health Department and it was probably less than, it was what, $6,000?
Uh, yeah, it was less than six. I want to say it was only two or three.
No, yeah.
So, I mean, if they come back with modification of customer service area and it's $10,000, I'm a whole lot more opt to, apt to vote for that, but if they bring back modification of customer service area at City Hall for $100,000, I'm a no. I mean, if there's, if there's other areas, if there's other places that they need that, I mean, that's what I need to know. If we needed.
If it's more than one area?
Yes, if I needed at the fire department, if I need it at all these different places, and what's that number for each of those? But to spend $100,000 at City Hall is not warranted.
I think that's where the bidding will help you as well, because they'll have to come back with a, an actual bid that tells you this is where we're doing this and this is what we are doing to it. So I think if you put that bid requirement behind it, then you see more detail of what the actual purchase is.
It's like the 490.
Also make it easier for us to evaluate once the invoices start coming in and we start requesting actual payment. We'll know better what to expect.
See, if they want the 85 radios for the fire department, $493,000, that's more than half of what money we've got for them. So if that truly is one of their priorities, then they're going to have to, they're going to have to take their list and kind of whittle it down, because that's a big chunk of what we've got to give them, so.
And if they know they have those limitations, they may decide that 50 is enough or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, some of these numbers could change if they know that there are stricter limitations.
So we'll send the list back to them to prioritize anything over, are you guys good with 10,000 needs a bid?
Yeah, I think most of the smaller ones are.
Either that or how they came up with the number.
Yeah, because a lot of them were just seem to be a number that they put on the form to get it filled out, so.
So yes, a bid or a quote on any of those items, and if they have something that's coming off of cooperative, they should have a quote for it anyway.
Okay.
Okay, what's next?
All right, so the next one is another municipality at A0201, A and B. This was for PPE and cleaning supplies and some office retrofits for 6,900, total being 6,986.
And they did have an estimate on that, that cost included with their application.
And that is within their limits of their number of citizens?
Correct, that is within their limits.
I'm fine.
Do you want to vote on that one now, or would you like me to continue through the list?
Have they already made those renovations or that's been asked before it's done?
All we had was a quote, but again, this, I think this application, they got to us back in late August, so. Whether or not they.
Yeah, at that time, they had not made the purchase yet.
What did the office retrofits include?
I can, it is a front counter for customer area in City Hall, tall base cabinets with decorative back, similar to panel we were shown upstairs to complement historic building, employee side of cabinets to have drawers at top and doors below. This is a 42-inch tall by 88-inch tall, long approximately. A five-foot section turned toward the front of the building to be ADA compliant, a five-foot open section with swinging door so allow entrance to behind the counter, and then a quartz group countertop, so some countertops as well. But I guess it's just the front counter for customer area is the main thing that it is.
Sounds like something similar in the clerk's office cabinet with drawers behind, that they have swinging doors on either side, but.
Just seems excessive to me. I mean, I'd approve half of that. I'd approve $3,000.
I just, I think we're going to treat them the same as the other municipalities. On the surface, it does sound extravagant, but I've not been there. So I don't know if it's something that's easily fixed or retrofitted or what. You can rack up a bill pretty quick and especially right now there by being so busy, so. It's not just Plexiglas on the counter.
No.
What was it, 6, 6,900? We spent 3,600 or something over one of our other elected officials' offices just on Plexiglas, so. I mean, that can add up fast.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with approving, but.
So they have not spent it yet. They're basically asking permission to proceed.
I can also read what they wrote. That was from the quote. Grant funds for retrofitting city halls are requested to provide critical separation between the clerk and persons entering City Hall. Most city business could take place at the counter. City clerk has posted county and CDC information guidelines in the Facebook page. I think that's about all they've got on the, so just, yeah, just retrofitting the City Hall for separation between the clerk and persons entering, seems like what that would be for.
I think we have to trust that they're doing the best. I mean, if we're going to sit here and go through every one of these, say, well, we, this is too much, we need to cut it in half. It.
You would have the option as well if you wanted to partially fund something, I mean.
I think that's what Chris was.
Well, yeah, so I mean, so we've, you know, City Hall's no different than any one of our buildings. I would say. I've been to most city halls in Cole County, and so, you know, do you need protection? Yeah. Are you wanting it extravagant or are you wanting something basic? I mean, case in point, these shields right here probably cost us less than 100 bucks, maybe plus some installation. I mean, you can get something done that protects your employees and most cities have one clerk there, probably part-time. I mean, sometimes the clerk's full-time, but most of them are there probably part-time. So the more surface you have, the more you have to clean it and the more it's going to get touched, so. You add doors, you add other things and. I look at some of these businesses, and I know you guys have been in there too, but, I mean, they put up a couple, two before's and they put a sheet of Plexiglas in between it. And it's, and that's, you know, at every counter, at every supermarket or every store in Cole County. That's all that those people have to protect them. And they may be wearing a mask or a face shield, but. I mean, maybe this is a little more permanent fix that, but I would say that a lot of them are going to go down, maybe once, once all this is over, so.
I don't know when that's going to be. So they did get a bid for the $6,900?
Correct, they do.
Yeah.
What was their allocation based on population?
They had 16,773 to spend.
Is this their first request?
Correct.
Yeah. I'm still okay with just approving it, but.
Allocations were just a number for me. I mean, that was maybe a maximum, but doesn't mean that it was just, we were going to give you a blank check to go out and just buy stuff, so. You know, we've made modifications in all our offices and spent $3,000, $4,000 and so.
I'm fine with it. I think it's reasonable. I think you can get up to 7,000, pretty, pretty easy to do that. I'm going to, I mean, I'll comb through it, but it's not going to be a fine-tooth comb, Michael managed all of it, so. We could pick apart probably most of them, so. Just move on past that one.
We want to prove it or do we want to? We wanna approve it, or do we wanna wait and approve them after we've gone through them all?
I don't care. I'm gonna do it right now. If you want to, get this one out of the way, because the ones above it, we're waiting on.
Yeah, I'd like to get, I'd like to, I'd like to get them out of the way if we can.
Make motion we approve A-02-01A and A-02-01B.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose?
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
Next.
All right. All right, the next section, B, are public schools. We have Chromebooks for the middle school and high school students. This particular school, we had items that we approved last week under Phase Two. The Chromebooks did not make the list last week because we did not have proof of payment yet, but now under Phase Three, we're able to move forward with that based on the invoice. And I think by now, they, they possibly have submitted proof of payment. The reason that we're recommending 18,000 rather than the 26,000 is because that's the difference to make up to their maximum allocation for that particular school. The next item is for outsourced tuition for online curriculum for distance learners. This particular school district had a maximum of 807,200. This was an item that, that they have budgeted at 6 million for the entire school year. It's because they don't have the capabilities in-house to provide distance learning, and so they're looking to do that through a contractor. So what we are putting forward, and the other thing is that they wanted to try to meet their allocation with fewer high-dollar items versus sending a lot of small-dollar PPE and cleaning supplies and that sort of thing. And so they proposed this one item that they're expecting to spend 6 million dollars for the school year, and of course, the terms of this grant only go through December 30th, and we know that there is a maximum of 807 for that school district, and they would be able to spend that in two to three months. So again, this is under Phase Three, based on estimates of things not purchased yet, and it wouldn't actually be funded until they provide the receipts.
So this is their allocation that.
Correct.
That's what we had allocated to them.
That's what we told them, and they knew the dollar amount, so they were just working within that and trying to make it easy for the documentation and tracking rather than submitting lots of small-dollar items.
Is this for the four or five-month window, or is this a year-long?
No, this would only be for the period through December 30th. Their estimate for the entire school year would be 6 million, or 3 million for one semester, which is the maximum time we'd be looking at. But then we're still limited by the 807,000.
And there are enough students on it already, virtually learning, to cover that cost?
I think their middle schools are closed down right now because of the lack of teachers. So their, their whole middle, their middle schools are.
You guys have any other questions about the public schools?
Is that just a flat contract amount, or is it based on students' participation in online learning, or?
I'm not entirely sure. The, you know, we have had some communication back and forth with them during Phase Two, because at, under Phase Two, we weren't able to put anything forward without receipts. So during Phase Two, they did not have, you know, supporting documentation for that.
Leanne, I thought in the initial application, there was a dollar amount per student, and there are actual enrollment in it. I don't know if you have that application, because it was one of the first ones when we were still.
Let me look at that.
Or maybe I'm imagining.
It says these funds will not only impact the 155, 1,555 that receive virtual instruction, but also help the 7,000 that remain to help them social distance them.
Yes, I thought they had a number of people that already elected to do that at the beginning of the school year.
Yeah, it, it's, it's 1,555 is how many selected it.
But it doesn't say how much that costs per student on there?
Doesn't seem like it. It just says the cost for this is enormous, and if all these students remain virtual for the whole year, it will cost the district nearly 6 million dollars. So I believe if all those 1,555 remain virtual for the entire year, it would be 6 million.
And if I've got the middle schools doing virtual now, they've got much, you know, a lot greater number than, than the number we started with.
But it'd still be reimbursement.
And so that's an indication that they would be matching these dollars with other dollars to be able to cover that cost.
And again, this would only be paid out based on reimbursement of actual expenses.
Correct.
Yeah, so with this, they're done with us.
Okay.
Okay.
The final one is another public school for PPE sanitizing equipment and dividers totaling And that is within their maximum cap.
I'm good.
Good, Jeff?
Yeah, it's good with that one. I don't know, the tuition part, I'd rather do things to try to keep kids in school, but I understand what they're trying to do, so. There's a lot of questions around that stuff. Seeing some of it firsthand in this.
So we're conditionally approving these? Is that what we're doing that?
Correct.
I may be that we conditionally approve B-02-01.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I may be that we approve, conditionally approve B-04-01.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I may be we approve B, conditionally approve B-01811.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Section D is for, well, just to let you know, section C would be for private schools. We have no further applications at this time for any private schools. D is for internal requests. The only thing we currently have is the contract contact tracing on behalf of schools. That number is still to be determined, but we're just keeping that on the list so we don't lose sight of it.
Leanne, we got some information on Friday, so hopefully we'll have an estimate of what that is here in the next day or two.
Okay, great. The next section on page two, section E, is for healthcare providers. EO2 was part of an application approved last week. There was 200 remaining under Phase Two, where we didn't have the final proof of payment. We're just bringing that forward this week under Phase Three because we had partial documentation. And under Phase Three, that would be acceptable. We just wouldn't reimburse it without full documentation. EO3 was from one of the providers who came to the meeting last Thursday, as is EO7. Those are items that have not been purchased yet, so those are things that are up for your consideration if those are priorities that you want to fund. E, 1910, it's actually, they submitted that one twice, so 182 or 1910. This one, we found some mathematical errors in their application, so we're keeping that in the incomplete column for now until we can get that resolved. I think we plan to have a discussion with them tomorrow to get a little more information on that. And then E, 1977, this is the one that was updated on the new version that I sent over this morning, so I'll just read through that. The requested amount was 319,892. This is for another healthcare provider who was at the meeting last Thursday, and these are for costs that have already been incurred, and they are seeking reimbursement. For GenXpert testing system, 152,103. Testing kits for 54,718. Testing supplies, disinfectant and thermometers for 55,692. Respirator fit tester for 12,820.
We got all these in front of us, you don't have to read through them.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure if you had gotten them yet.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, we passed that out.
Okay. So those items highlighted in yellow, that's what has changed. All of those, we had documentation for the other category. Those were items that we were not able to determine based on the information provided, so those could be potentially eligible with more follow-up from them. So what we are determining to be eligible at this time is 299,009.
And I will add that the EO3, the 100,000 for the onsite testing, they did submit an application, I believe it was yesterday, for that updated dollar amount that they, I think they talked about during the meeting on Thursday, so that one did get updated to, I believe, 65,000 is what that's probably gonna end up being.
65 total or an additional 65?
I think it's 65 total, just based off of what they talked about on that Thursday meeting, because they were saying that, I think, the testing supplies weren't as expensive as they once were, but it talks about the, having a testing day as well.
But that's just one day, right?
This one says, Compass, oh, I'm sorry. This one says, proposes a complete two-day, two full days of COVID-19 testing for Cole County community, serving approximately 500 individuals each day, so 1,000 people. So it would be one of, a testing day, two testing days.
So we've got DHSS now.
I have a comment about that DHSS, that they're gonna do a testing day October 27th, and then probably again November 10th. I guess they're doing these monthly testing areas in the central region, and they had been going to Columbia, but now because of the numbers in Columbia, they're doing a testing site with different money there every week. So that central region one, they're considering moving to Cole County. So we might have a DHSS-funded testing day every month, might, so.
So one-day testing for anybody, everybody free?
Right.
I'm not for any of those really.
Well, that's why DHSS.
I don't think we need to fund.
No.
DHSS is gonna waste their money on it.
Yeah, that's.
I think we could use our resources elsewhere.
Yeah, I think with.
Absolutely.
With that email I saw, that I, I would probably deny the Compass Health because it, it's covered.
DHSS is going to do that.
Yeah.
And it sounds like we won't have to.
Or not approve it, yeah. How do you, what do you feel about the trailer?
I actually, I mean, my opinion is that could be used for other things, like when we have to do the vaccinations, or if there was a natural disaster. I think that the community health center is a really good community partner, and we could work with them to use it now and later. Like tornado, you know, we went to, when they had the, what'd they call it at the link? Was it called the MAC, the Multi-HC Resource Center, Mark, whatever they called it. Anyway, we went there and gave HEPA vaccinations, you know, for the workers that were affected by the tornado, so, and that, the trailer could be used to do COVID vaccinations, or flu, or HEPA, or, or anything like that, so I can see where that could be a really nice asset. I think the one-day events are covered.
Yeah, I'd be good on everything but the, the EO3.
So for E, we have a million and a half.
We don't.
So if you're good with all of them, we're still over, right?
Well, you would only be the 727, but if you're not doing the 100,627 for healthcare providers there.
Oh, I was gonna add the other column, the requests. So.
Right.
Total. So then the other mobile testing one that got submitted twice, we got two numbers in their form. What was the explanation on that again? So it's actually a total of a million, ten some change?
So I think.
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so I think that there was some mathematical issues, and so there's an incurred versus a budgeted amount there, so.
Yeah, we've got, we've got an email to them, and they, they responded that they'd like to talk to us on the phone about what, what we're asking, because they, they kind of just gave us a spreadsheet with their costs and things like that, so I just wanted to get a little more detail on, on certain items that they're asking for. I believe it's for a mobile testing site, so I mean, in theory, if it's all for that mobile testing site, it, it would be eligible, but they've just got things listed like leases and maintenance and things like that, so I would just wanna get a little more detail. And then when we were working with the spreadsheet, Leanne noticed that there was some clerical errors in the spreadsheet as well, so we just need to get a little bit more information on that. So I, I would, I would imagine that those would be eligible costs once we get a firm grasp on what the actual number is. And that would be supported.
And I just realized that, that 2.2 million in the potentially eligible category should be 1.1. We changed the formula up above, and I did not correct that. So we would still have outstanding 1,127,680 as potentially eligible, but in reality, we're not sure that that 1.106 is an accurate number based on what they gave us. So I guess that is to say, if you decided in the future to fund that other entity, there might be some consideration of reallocating some money to healthcare providers, reallocating some of your, you know, what you've currently allocated by category.
Leanne, is the highlighted one the EO1977, A to H? Is that all one facility?
Correct.
Yes, and that is all already incurred costs. In those, the other items, we do have an email to them to just get a little more detail. They, the description just wasn't, it was in the medical jargon that I don't understand, so I had to get a little more information on what those were for.
So as of right now, then, they were in Phase Two, and that has expired or closed, whatever you wanna call it? So as of right now, then they were in Phase 2, and that has expired or closed, whatever you want to call it. Right, are they able to still apply for more in, or Phase 3?
Yeah, it's still rolled into 3.
There's really no limit on facilities. There was just a limit on the overall amount that you guys were going to spend in this category.
But did we have a deadline for them to apply for? Are we going to continue to have them applying through the end of the year?
We didn't put, just put a deadline on the phases. So in Phase 2, they could only apply for reimbursement of already spent items. The, the amount got rolled into Phase 3, which runs through the end of October, but now there's not that restriction. And I think we actually did up the amount from Phase 2 to Phase 3 for healthcare providers.
Right. So in Phase 3, even though it's not required to have full documentation to be conditionally approved for funding, certainly if you have already made those purchases and can provide the information and seek reimbursement, it's obviously just going to be quicker to be able to put that through without going back and forth getting receipts. So certainly even in Phase 3, we would encourage the documentation if they have it.
And the 01977A, is that for testing that's already been done? And they haven't ran that through insurance? I don't know what that means.
It's the actual testing.
Just the kit?
Well, not the kit, like the machine.
Oh, the machine.
I think.
Yeah, yeah, it's a machine.
Okay.
Because right below it is the kits.
Testing system, so it's a machine.
So the ones with the testing unit, the trailer, are they doing testing right now?
Yeah, Senator Schiff, they have a rapid machine in their office, but I think they have a rapid hardware type of supplies for it.
So this would actually ramp up our testing ability in Cole County. I like the idea of the trailer.
Yeah.
So, you know, I wouldn't mind getting that one going. How long is it going to take them to implement that and get that trailer put together? Do you got any idea?
Didn't they say, I can't remember what the, I think it said in the, Kristen told me, but I forgot.
Did their application say how long it would take to get the trailer?
I want to see. I know it wasn't like, it's not like it was on.
So we're going to get it after the first of the year?
Could be.
Now you just got to change.
It doesn't seem like it says in the application when they would get it or how long it would take to get it.
Well, I don't know, it's not going to be overnight, but.
I just pray to God that we get it and it's not needed for that, it could be used for other things.
I'm good with the trailer probably as well, so, anyway.
Other questions that we can help answer?
What about the other costs that have already been incurred?
So if we approved the trailer and the other ones where the costs have been incurred, that's putting us.
627,844 for today. How much did we approve the last time in healthcare providers, Leanne, do you know?
I think it was 26. Does that sound right, Leanne?
That was minimal.
Yeah, it was pretty minimal.
Yeah, or 24 if it was just that one organization.
Yeah, I think it was just the 24.
So it had 1.5 in there, and just that other mobile testing, they've got over a million there that they're requesting there. And then that's all we've got to last us to the end of the year for this group, I guess.
Well, everything had changed in Phase 4 depending on what COVID. I mean, it's, who knows what November and December are going to be?
So that's my point, is do you buzz through all of this and say, all right, get what you, get what you can with what you got?
Yeah.
Go with it now, and to hell with November, whenever it hits the fan, I won't be in the woods hunting, so.
Well, we had this in Phase 2, and now we're in Phase 3, but.
Okay, I'm just, I'm asking though, because then whenever that does, then they come back and want more, we're out.
Leanne, if the timeframe on the trailer to actually get here is not for five to six months, are we going to be outside of the timeframe to use CARES funding?
Yes. No, 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 I, I think you can obligate the money.
Oh, okay. I know, but doesn't it have to be fully spent by March 31st?
Yeah, that, that would probably, if it was outside that later date, Kristen. But I think, could you not spend the money before you get the trailer?
They're saying five to six months on the delivery of the trailer, the mobile testing unit.
It's probably based on them getting materials too, which hadn't been an easy thing to come by.
So if it's $300,000, we can do a lot with the old health center and let them just use it. It just won't be mobile.
So does that change your mind on?
Yeah, it kind of changed my thinking on it. Although maybe they had something that was kind of geared towards this stuff and had something put together, set in all a lot, and all you had to do is change a few things around and.
This is also new.
You do other mobile testing and stuff.
I mean, we can, we can approve a contingent on them, I mean, we're not.
Yeah, maybe they could, you could approve a contingent on them getting a different timeframe or seeing if they get expedited or something like that.
I think it's going to make it difficult if it's six months from now.
Yeah.
I mean.
Tell them to get a price tag on one if we get it before Thanksgiving.
What's with the Black Friday deal?
We want the day after.
I would, I'd still just approve it, and then if we can look into it more if it is going to, I mean, if it, it's going to come in too late to be paid for by CARE, then we can just strike it, but.
What's the date you're going to put on it?
Whatever their deadline is where it has to be used, so March.
Well, so you can encumber it by December 31st, but it has to be spent by March 31st.
Yeah, so.
Right.
I'd rather get more information before we approve it. They can find out more info, we got a meeting every Tuesday and Thursday, so that's just where I'm at with it. I'm just one though.
Okay, well, let's do the two.
Well, you had one, you said you pre-approved, so we can dump it on Chris.
It's fun to use one. We're going to remodel it.
We'll go get a Playmore trailer from Osage County.
Why are you going to get one from Osage County? You can get one from Cole County. Sam shop local, come on.
Who, you got?
Okay. Back on.
Burt the house.
Trailer trends. Trailer trends.
Okay, are we going to do, are we going to do E-02 and then do hospitals?
Yeah, okay, let's, let's do the $200,000. Are you good with the $200,000 from last week that was waiting for a receipt?
Yes.
Can I get someone to vote?
Whose was this, where were we at?
E dash 02.
E-02?
E-02.
All right, I'm going to motion approve E-02.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you guys want to deny E-03, or do you just want to leave it out there? It's the one-day testing, or two-day testing that we think DHSS is going to.
I'd say, I'd say probably just deny it.
I don't care, is it going to hurt anything leaving it out there? I couldn't tell you, I'm probably denying it throughout, but if something weird happened, then it would still be there if.
What is, BKD, what's your recommendation on that? If it's something that we would like to leave available if we need it later, just leave it on the list? Or do you want us to deny it and they would have to reapply?
Well, they've already reapplied with that 65,000 amount, so denying the 100,000 one might be fine. And then we can put that 65,001 on there and leave it on there going forward.
So I'll make a motion to deny E-03.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then E-07, do you guys want to ask more questions prior to approval? Do you want to approve pending more information?
I'm not going to approve until we have more information or a date that's closer to, to it. Because I think if, you know, else we could use that money and do something at the health department.
Okay, so.
Old health departments.
Teresa and Leanne, can you reach out to D, or E-07 and find out an estimate, estimated date of delivery? And if they can have that delivered within the window we have timeframe-wise?
Yes.
And then we'll, we'll vote on that one the next time, once we have more information.
Okay.
Then the E-01977A through H. Oh gee.
I'm fine.
These are costs that have already been incurred?
Mm-hmm.
I kind of like to wait to see what we're going to do with the other testing and stuff. I mean, although this has already been to pay for some of it.
Just remember, we do have the December deadline.
Yeah.
So we can't keep pushing everything to the very end.
I think testing is the main, I mean, that and schools are probably our two most important things with CARES money, so. We're going to keep healthcare just hanging out there, it's.
But who are they testing?
This is already spent, this is already tests that have been conducted.
All Cole County people, all people that were sick and needed testing?
Yeah.
I don't know either.
We're, we're.
So there's questions there.
This is one of the ones that came and talked to you on Thursday last time too, about the already incurred testing. So I can't remember if they talked about if it was.
Well, so I don't know that you can verify that it's all Cole County testing, but some of the items, like the signage for the testing site, the testing tents, the workstations for the testing site, are all items that they had to have to get their mobile site up and running. I don't know that, you could say that you don't want to do the kits or the supplies because you can't verify that that was directly Cole County residents. I mean, I would say at least a good percentage of them is, but I think there's a lot of expenses there that would have to be incurred whether you were testing Cole County residents or Osage, Miller, Monata, whoever.
That is coming in because I got to go through the innocent.
I mean, same thing with the testing system. I mean, there's a lot of things in that list that they would have to have that expense, no matter what.
For at some point for the testing? I mean, we don't know all that.
Well, they do have to certify that they're not getting funding in another source, correct? So like, it can't be something they're getting insurance to cover already.
Right.
So this is above and beyond that, so. I mean, they're going to be testing in December, they're probably going to be testing in January. I think we need to help them.
Did they say what they were going to do with that equipment once they moved to doing point-of-care testing in the clinic offices? I mean, some of the point-of-care ones, they can be blue and other stuff is one machine. I don't know if I'm the one that they, like, they, well, they break out, they can do the whole, I have.
I think so.
We can just wait and wait and send back four or five million dollars at the end of December.
Is that what you guys want to do right now, is wait on other healthcare providers?
I'm not voting for it today.
Anybody else? Sam's a guest, Chris?
I'm not denying it, so it's however you want to look at it.
No? Okay, so we're not moving forward with E-01977? So next.
All right, the next section, Section F is nonprofit organizations. The first is for glass window barriers for an essential utility service for $4,100. FO6 is for additional cleaning services, PPE, and upgrade to video surveillance system for contact tracing. This was an entity that we funded in part last week based on Phase 2 with full documentation provided. These items were remaining that had partial documentation. So we're now proposing these under Phase 3 to be conditionally approved if they provide the full documentation. And again, this is a nonprofit organization that actually had positive COVID cases among their clients. FO0210, this is for, under Phase 3, COVID testing and contact tracing, PPE and other public health expenses. They've also asked for funds for technology and distance learning. Because our maximum for nonprofit organizations is 25,000, we propose 25,000 of their request in the COVID testing and contact tracing category. But again, both of those items are actually eligible. So you could choose to allocate between the two or similar to what we did on the other municipality, we could go back to them and say, you're eligible for a maximum of 25,000. How would you like to allocate that?
That might be better.
FO0236 is for hardware for telehealth and social services for 1,550. Um, FO oh two thirty-six is for hardware for telehealth and social services for fifteen fifty-eight. FO one eight six four includes cleaning supplies and safety equipment, increased staffing for social distancing. This is where they are providing services to children on-site and they needed to hire additional people so that they could spread out the kids into smaller groups with more supervision and space them out. Because they are limited to twenty-five thousand, uh, we passed on the summer camp staff. That was for payroll, um, for summer camp staff that they continued paying salaries despite the camps, the summer camps being canceled. And then the final one is paying staff that had to be quarantined. So we just allocated those funds with a maximum of twenty-five thousand dollars, putting those dollars in the areas that we felt were most easily justified.
And before Leanne goes on, I will talk about the payroll situation. We have had a number of talks with the people that are trying to understand the guidance better and things like that. And the threshold is, um, for these, like, not-for-profits and things like that, not so much for the municipalities. There's kind of some different rules there. But basically, if they have shifted, um, their, their job by at least fifty-one percent. So say a librarian now is a lab tech or something like that, or is helping in the lab to do testing or something like that, is that significant of a change? Not that they just had a change in their duties because of COVID, but it's now specific to COVID. And/or something like this, they had to increase staff to maintain social distancing. That payroll item would be considered included, considered eligible. Now, the, just paying the summer camp kids with this money, that one, I don't think we would consider that eligible even if they were under that twenty-five thousand threshold because that's not something that's significantly changed because of COVID. Their job duties didn't change significantly because of, because of COVID. It's just paying them because they couldn't work because the camp got closed. So that's gonna be kind of a theme going through because we are getting more of those payroll requests in the not-for-profit realm that we will have to consider that, those items, whether they are significantly changed in their duties.
So we did not talk about payroll with nonprofits? We did exclude payroll costs for small business?
Yeah.
Correct. Um, I'll just move on through the rest of these. F one eight ninety-one is for, uh, distance learning training. That was allowable, but we capped them at twenty-five thousand. Telete, telework, nineteen sixty-four is telework technology for four thousand eight hundred and nineteen. Uh, nineteen sixty-six is for construction of COVID-nineteen adaptations to building. This is actually a shelter and they built additional bathrooms because they had multiple families sharing bathrooms and this enabled them to, uh, space out their shelter residence to improve social distancing. Um, FO one nine nine nine, uh, to Teresa's point about the payroll, we're still getting information from them, so we've put the payroll in the potentially eligible category for now. Uh, they also had telework technology of seven hundred and sixty, which we could put forward at this time, or we could wait until we have resolution on the eleven seven seventy-one and put it all together at once. Questions on any of those?
So obviously, we haven't talked much about scoring, but as I see some of the scores out to the left, some of them aren't scoring very well.
So a lot of the, the scoring differences you're gonna see are if they've gotten previous funding, that's gonna be a big knock. So, um, if they've received previous funding, that'll knock them down. So most of the lower scores that you see, that's probably the main reason why. And then if their request, uh, was a certain dollar amount, um, I, I guess with the twenty-five thousand, I think we're all under that. And then if they have any experience with, um, federal funds or anything like that in the past, that's gonna give them higher scores. So those are gonna be your main differences. And I can speak specific to certain people if you want. But if they have gotten funding from another COVID source or something, that's where you're gonna see those scores to be lower. So that's gonna be a main difference for the, for those. And then if they have other, um, uh, experience with, with grant programs and things like that, we gave them a higher score because they're, they're less risky.
So what all falls into a not-for-profit?
Is it anyone that qualifies for a five oh one C three? Is that what's making them a non-for-profit?
Correct.
Guess I'm just one, but I'd like to see who we're awarding this stuff to, so. Because, you know, a utility service to me is not a not-for-profit. And yet they're in a not-for-profit category.
I mean, it's quite extensive what you have to go through to get those.
Designations.
So how does a utility service become a five oh one C three?
Well, they probably have their regular business and then they have something in their five oh one C three and they have other things in their five oh one C sixes and they get created.
Yeah, I probably should, uh, adjust that response to say a five oh one C, which might be a five oh one C three or a five oh one C six, something else.
Don't ask me the difference. It's just more or less what you can and can't write off.
But it really didn't fall in any other category.
How much lobbying we can do, all that good stuff.
I mean, it's up to you if you wanna know the names of the applicants.
Well, the names of the applicants are going in the paper after we approve them.
Yes, they are.
So then who is FO four?
Do you wanna know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got two of them.
So you just want to do, hold on, case by case, you wanna know?
Well.
No, I wanna know all of them.
In the nonprofit group? And in the small business group, or we'll just take one at a time?
Um, I don't know that I need to know the small business group, but I mean, when we're, we're saying that, you know, you're a five oh one C, I mean, some may say you're a not-for-profit. I may say that, you know, you've filed the proper paperwork to get there, but yet somebody's, somebody's making a lot of money that might be the director or something.
Okay, so you both wanna know who FO four is?
Mm-hmm.
For sure. So FO four, Leanne?
That is Cole County Public Water Supply District number four. Uh, this one has been out there for quite a while. Because they had not made the purchase yet, it hasn't been eligible until we got into phase three. Uh, but they have been asking about, uh, you know, the deadlines as far as when construction would need to be completed. They have received bids. Well, I should say they have, after consulting with local vendors, an estimate of forty-one hundred dollars was provided to furnish and install materials for a permanent physical barrier made of glass to separate the employees of the district from the public that they routinely conduct business with. And then if they're awarded, they would advertise a public service for bids.
This is all still phase two stuff for nonprofits, right? Just getting their information in or?
Uh, this is actually under phase three, uh, because it's not, they have not purchased it yet.
Okay.
They applied back when it was phase one.
Some, some did in phase two as well.
Okay.
Some of the later ones.
Yeah, but this particular one.
How much did we have left?
That's what you're asking.
In nonprofit? Do we know? I know we had three hundred thousand.
I don't think we gave out a lot.
Yeah, I think three hundred thousand.
That would give them up.
You wanna know how much we've given so far to nonprofits?
Yeah.
If you have that available.
Yeah, I do. Uh, thirty-two thousand.
Okay.
So ten percent.
And then we got a max of twenty-five thousand right now, so we don't have that many really in here. Can we just get the list of who they are and y'all can email it to us and we can look at it? So waiting for right now?
Leanne, if you wanna go ahead and, um, send all those applications?
Okay.
Cause then if somebody wants to think about it or whatever, depending on who it is, they can. Either that or go ahead and give me a COVID test right now and shove it right through my brain. No.
Yeah, I hated, I hated to say after we got through section E that those were the easy ones.
Great, and we still got a G to go. So, I mean, that way we can look at it, we don't have to decide that today then, right? We got Thursday. Are you good with that?
Okay.
I'm good, but we need to, we need to decide sometime.
There's plenty of time.
You got a lot of money to spend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm like, we're.
So a couple of questions. Um, on F zero zero two ten, do you guys want to send that one back and ask their priorities? They're the ones that went over the twenty-five thousand, but in multiple categories. Do you want them to prioritize like you're having the municipalities do?
What, what is the testing part? I had that question a while ago. So they had to get, they paid for their testing or to?
So this is under phase three, so these funds have not been spent yet.
So they're wanting to spend money to get tested or to do testing or? I guess I'm not understanding.
To do testing, so.
To do testing. On employees?
Since we're saying their names, can we just say what it is at this point? I mean.
Yeah, if you're gonna send the list, yes.
Yeah.
It's the university that's testing students.
Oh, Lincoln?
And particularly those students participating in athletics who may need more frequent testing.
Yeah, we only did kindergarten through twelve in the schools. So you could say that Lincoln is a school.
Okay, well, the testing, I didn't know it was a school, so.
Yeah.
I explained it.
Um, I guess you do have the ability, if you want to consider Lincoln a school, to go beyond the twenty-five thousand. They're falling into not-for-profit because they're not a K through twelve school, but they are a school, so you could.
But then we also have a lot of, um, childcare and.
Yeah, what about Columbia Colleges and?
Right.
A lot of others.
Well, it's for testing athletes, keeping them in school, keeping them in their games, whatever. It's not, I just didn't understand what the testing meant.
So, Chris, it sounds.
Nationwide colleges have been, uh, kind of the new hotspot. If you've been following the news much on that, um, there've been a lot of college outbreaks.
What were you saying, Debbie?
How they were talking about going ahead and sending all the nonprofit, all the applications to you guys so you can see who they are and what they're actually asking for. And then maybe coming back on Thursday and deciding on those then.
Okay.
Is that still okay unless you guys have any more questions on the Fs?
I think you need to decide too, are you good with doing payroll costs for nonprofits? You've excluded payroll costs for small business. Do you want to do payroll costs for nonprofits?
And again, these are not ones that have already been budgeted. These are people that have, um, specific to COVID, right, Leanne?
Correct.
So you said something about the lower scores, uh, meant that they'd received other funding. Does it, does in the application, does it say what that other funding was for?
Um, some of them do, some of them aren't super specific. Some just say yes to previous funding and then get a dollar amount. And then some will write in additional comments and say PPP loans or whatever it was. But, um, it, it's, some do, some don't. But they will give you the amount and if they've gotten it.
So obviously, if they got a PPP loan, then that was for payroll.
Mm-hmm.
Correct, some of them have, yeah.
I guess until we have them, you know, we won't know if we have any further questions.
Okay, so you're gonna send applications on those and they can review them and we'll talk about them on Thursday?
Okay, so we'll move on to section G then, small businesses. Uh, the first, GO five oh one and GO five oh two, that continues onto the second page, those are both for the same organization. Uh, they asked for a variety of things. We did cap them at five thousand because that is the limit on small businesses. So, uh, these were expenses that were already incurred. And I think they had been excluded during phase two because they had received other funding. That was the reason most of the small businesses had been passed over during phase two because they had received other funding. So, um, and you'll, that, that's reflected in the scores as well.
So those, you see a lot of sixes and that's.
Yeah.
They leave because they've received other funding.
So, uh, you can see the items there. I think we did talk about this one before, um, a while back. Cause I think this one was received actually during phase one when we weren't even looking at small businesses yet. Uh, moving forward, GO eight and GO oh one fifty-eight, we're seeking more information there. Maximum possible five thousand per business. The commission is, has made the determination not to cover lost revenue. So we are looking to see if they have, uh, more concrete expenses that can qualify. Uh, GO oh one nine nine. Based on their requests of thirty-one thousand, we maxed them at five thousand and are recommending the categories that were most easily justifiable. And that was thirty-five hundred for, uh, COVID testing and contact tracing. $550 for telework, and $950 for some new devices that they used for ordering and their online store, phone lines and web design. GO-308 was for contact tracing and PPE. We maxed them at $5,000. GO-417. This is the one that we brought to you last week with the rent and utilities during the mandatory shutdown and the custom order inventory. And then G-1961 for PPE and cleaning services for $1,034.
And so, some of the ones that have done contact tracing and stuff, they've included receipts for that stuff?
We haven't gotten receipts from these. These are the Phase 3 now that will get that before they are actually reimbursed. So, they've just either described what they're doing or something along those lines.
But some of them have submitted receipts, have they not or not?
Yeah, so the GO-5, they've submitted receipts.
Right.
I think everybody else, 417 has submitted invoices and receipts. And I believe 1961 has also submitted invoices and receipts.
Okay.
See, advertising to me is just, we advertised and we were closed. But I called up my advertisers and I said, okay, here's what we're going to do. We're either going to cut in half what I'm paying you per month or we're just going to cut out my ads while we're closed.
This was mainly advertising for when they were getting back to doing food or delivering and things like that. So, it was advertising that they're doing online ordering, that they're doing herb site service and things like that is the way that they had described it.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether they were doing any advertising before based on the description.
I've been good on everything but the advertising. It's not...
Did we figure out the timeframe we were covering the rent and expenses on?
We did from the beginning of, yeah, we did beginning of the county order to the end of the state order. So, it covered, I think, 39 days.
Because I know I saw the email and...
Yeah, we actually went with your suggestion.
That's why you weren't going to tell me.
Now, every now and then you have a little, there's a little glimmer of brillancy.
So, you're on all of them except for the...
Just a little glimmer, huh?
That little light of mine is going to set in. So, you're good with all of them except for the advertising?
Yeah.
But if they take away the advertising out of GO-5, you can put that somewhere else.
Leanne, what was miscellaneous?
We could go back to them. So, some of the other things were food. They were providing meals for their staffs and things like that. And they had some other miscellaneous equipment or I think it was construction kind of things, but they didn't have a lot of detail on, they just kind of had checks written to people. So, we didn't have a lot of detail on that. So, the ones that we chose to include were the ones that we had the best detail on. So, we had invoices and checks for like the advertising and things like that. But some of the items in that miscellaneous, we just maybe had a check that was written in a handwritten kind of thing.
Save food for your employees, you're a restaurant, so it's kind of like just...
I think we've taken the opinion that food's not covered, correct?
Yeah, so like if you're buying food for like, it's a touchy one. We were talking about it yesterday, actually. So, like, if the government is buying food for, you know, a meeting or something like buying lunches. If that's not something that you would normally do...
Oh, that counts.
That shouldn't be included. But something like this, there's food programs in the guidance that you could...
Right.
Fund, things like that.
Yes, yes.
And if you had like, if they weren't able to use the food, maybe the food was going to go bad.
I'm not...
That could be considered expenses during the mandatory shutdown or something like that, Kristin. So, there are some things that they could include in for food.
Yes.
But some things that are.
Oh, I'm hungry now.
Okay, small business, where are we at? Yes, no? Do you want to see the applications? Do you not want to see the applications?
So, we want to let them get, go back to GO-5 and see if there's some other expenses versus advertising?
Okay.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, but the other, I'd...
Are you guys good with 199?
Yep.
Total of $5,000, what about 308?
What was that, contact tracing and PPE? So, they're, the contact tracing, I guess specifically. So, they're having to do their own tracing?
Correct, for people who have come into their business.
Okay, I'm not sure I necessarily understand that. They qualify, I guess.
I think you can take it out of one category and probably put it into a different one if it's just how they diced it.
Yeah, basically, they're asking for 31 and we're going to give them 5, so I think...
308, another contact tracing and PPE, $5,000 or...
Yep.
Yeah, wore me down.
And 417, you're okay with two or...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we were just looking for clarification of what dates we were going to cover the last time, right?
I move that we approve G-00199.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve G-00308.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And I move that we approve G-00417.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. What about the last one there? You guys good?
Yes.
Move that we approve G-01961.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I didn't even see it then, right?
So, the top one, you want to wait until they look at the other expenses? You want to eliminate the advertising? Is that what... Or do I have two of you that are good with advertising? What do you want to do there?
For 05?
Yep.
I thought we were going to see if they could move it around somewhere. How much of it was actually? Well, they have a lot of other miscellaneous in there.
We can give them the $5,000 and just...
They have specifically talked about advertising to reopen your business as a allowable cost.
It is, or is...
It is.
Damn. If I can.
I'm fine with it, but if there was a holdup for you, Sam?
No, that's fine. I'm just, just...
I'm good.
Let's move forward.
Okay.
I move that we approve G-05.
Second.
$5,000.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wore you down.
Well, it's, they've got enough other stuff, so... Okay.
That's it on the list today, correct?
Yep.
That's it.
Oh, that was the easy one, you're saying?
Thought, I thought it was... So, the last thing on the agenda was just the reporting for the quarter of July through September. Kristin did get that reporting in, I believe it's Friday, so we are all up to speed there. So, we will have another monthly reporting starting in November that we'll work on. So, reporting side, we are good to go. So, that's all I have left.
You guys have anything else for them before they leave?
I don't think so.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Good to talk today.
We'll talk to you on Thursday.
All right, thanks.
Anything else?
I may be standing in recess till 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.